Looking to resume the regular meeting of council, May 25th, 2015. We have one item to add to the agenda that I'm aware of, so under correspondence, please add. It'll be 6.1. It is a letter from the District of Machosen, requiring some input from council. Anything else? Across the way, seeing none, looking for approval of the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation? Folks, this is an opportunity for you to speak to council. If it's items that have been spoken to in the past, we're looking for new information, not necessarily repeat of information. So, I will open the mic, and you're welcome to come up. I think it's on, I think I can see the red light at the back. And, please state your name and your address for the benefit of the recorder. So, I will open it up at this time. Any of the members of public?
I was here once before. I think my agenda's a little bit different. And, all the traffic.
Name and address, please, sir.
Okay, this is why I'm gonna do this. I'm gonna read it.
No, could we get your name and your address?
My name is Lawrence Campbell.
Perfect, thank you.
I live at 333 Ben Homer Drive, directly across from the Dunsmere School bus stop. My wife Sheri and I raised our two boys there, both of whom attended Saint's Church School, Dunsmere School, and Belmont School. I have no political or religious affiliations. I have never written a letter to the editor. I have never called into a radio talk show. I have never marched in protest. I have never called the cops when one of my neighbors had a loud party. Until a few weeks ago, I had never attended a municipal council meeting either. I do consume alcohol. I do not smoke tobacco or cannabis, but if I did, tobacco would not be my first choice. I'm reading the following comments, rather than resetting them from memory to avoid repeating myself, which my wife says I have a tendency to do, when I think the person I'm talking to isn't listening. There's two points I would like council to address directly and specifically. Number one, does council acknowledge that the ability of parents to load and unload their kids on private property out of the roadway all these years, did in fact, provide a much-needed margin of safety they wouldn't have had otherwise? If not, please explain the thinking behind your answer. If so, what's gonna happen when that's gone? Number two, should this development proceed as proposed, does council feel any sense of responsibility at all, in terms of re-establishing that safety margin by other means? If not, please explain the thinking behind your answer. If so, what are you gonna do about it? I understand and fully support a developer's right to petition for setback variations, or variances, sorry, or zoning changes in the sole interest of making money. Even if doing so involves sprinkling so much pixie dust on the application, that the neighbors do end up buying into it at some point. I do not, however, support Colwood council's apparent attempt to do the same thing. While we all know it's not Colwood's fault this property is being sold off, the fact that the refuge it provided for all those kids, for all those years, at no cost to the municipality, goes with it though, does make this Colwood problem, in my opinion. As I said last time, I think the city of Colwood should buy this property, or exchange it for city-owned property of equal value, and return for the developer into more suitable location, as the kids and parents of Colwood still need this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other speakers?
Hello. Hello, my name is John Vinzer. I live at 3340 Painter Road. I'm here to talk a little bit about the proposed property development again, and I have also written something, so I don't repeat myself, as well. So, a lot of the plan referred to the commission, or the proposed site, talked about the official community plan. So I did go in and take a look at it, and I have some questions and concerns. So I'm just gonna ask that the council consider the following, before you decide to vote or proceed with this application tonight. So inside the OCP, I found that Wishart South is designated under the heading Controlled Growth Area Neighborhood Existing Settled Area. It's all in yellow on the map, which is on page 27. That designation led me to page 32 of the OCP, which contains density targets for subject areas. The area in question falls well within the small blocks, small lots, sensitive infill housing on the map. And this is subject to a 25 to 35 dwelling per hectare limit. This is on page 32. The land use committee, however, determined the target of density at 50 to 70 dwellings per hectare, presumably because they thought the proposed development met the general corridor density, primary corridor, transit, and cycle and pedestrian network criteria, which is on page 32. Although Machosen Road does allow transit and pedestrian, it does not allow, it doesn't have cycle lanes. So, that, to me, doesn't fit the primary corridor definition laid out in the OCP. But this proposed development does not empty onto Machosen Road. It empties onto Painter Road, which is well within, you know, well within the neighborhood infill housing density targets that apply. So, my question, kind of, that maybe you should consider tonight, according to the OCP, which target, density targets are correct? I see a problem there. Also listed under policy for neighborhood areas is policy 3.10.5, which states an overall density objective of 30 units per hectare, or 12 per acre, for infill development in neighborhood-designated area should guide the choices about density. This is on page 34. The proposed 45 dwellings per hectare for this site is well above that OCP target. Is a hook gonna come out and scoop me off?
You're done.
Okay. Okay. So I do not think this policy was adhered to by the land use committee. On May 7th, the land use committee suggested disallowing secondary suites on the proposed development. This contravenes the regional context statement, point number six, improve housing affordability, on page 115 of the OCP, which states that secondary suites will be permitted in all parts of the community in single-family and multi-family homes, thus increasing the stock of affordability housing. So that's stated on page 115 of the OCP. And my concern is that, in future, property owners will apply for and be permitted by this, to include secondary suites within their properties. This will further confound the density problem, and increase traffic, and all the other things we've been talking about. Lastly, I'd like to address the petition, from the neighbors of the proposed development site. On the Colwood website, the OCP introduction main page states, although a piece of property is assigned to particular zoning classification, the actual use is a balance between developer's plan, the preference of the neighborhood, and the council's vision for the community. I don't think the preference of the neighborhood was taken into account by the land use committee. They moved to recommend development application, even though 200-plus people signed a petition stating they're not comfortable with this level of density. As noted on the petition itself, the petitioners are not against developing the site. They would welcome development at a lower density, and a level that is compatible with the neighborhood. We hope that the council will do what the land use committee did not, and take into account the wishes of the taxpayers and petitioners, who will be most affected by any future development in our neighborhood. Please do not allow this application to go further, and enforce the lower density targets that are outlined in the OCP. Thank you very much.
I'd ask you, folks, to refrain from the support, or boos and hisses, or that sort of thing, just to keep it fair across the board. Any other members of the public, please? And thank you, John, for your comments.
Hi, my name is Catherine Robertson, 395 Farview Road. I live at the corner of Painter and Farview, and quite often, almost every day, I can take a picture of the traffic backed up, all the way from Painter and Machosen to my kitchen window. School buses, et cetera. Yet, on, last week, on Thursday, there was an ambulance trying to get through. It couldn't get through with the chaos with the kids getting out of school, the buses, the moms and dads picking up, and there was an emergency down at the other end, and it was mayhem, right in front of our house. I wanted to bring the committee's attention, or the council's attention, to the minutes from the Cycling Advisory Committee of Monday, March 2nd, where it states that Painter Road should not be considered for share-use travel lanes, due to the amount of traffic, including buses from Dunsmere School. Well, if you can't have a bike lane, you can't have numerous amounts of driveways backing out into the road, either. It's the same thing. You're putting too many objects in the way of a corner. Already, the cars, I've sent a few pictures, I've got lots of pictures of cars driving up the wrong side of the lane to turn down to Tipton to avoid the street. They've got pictures with the fire chief in line, school buses in line. I wanna know what Colwood's gonna do if this thing goes through, and then the overflow goes onto our streets. The residents are gonna ask for residential parking-only signs, then where are the parents for Dunsmere or Saint's are gonna pick up their children? It's like a domino. It's a triangular piece of property in the middle of three schools, and it needs special consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Robertson. Any other members of the public, on this or any other matter? Last and final chance. Seeing none, folks, we will move on. I have nothing in mayor's message unless members of council have announcements, so I'll open it up to you, across the way. Nothing, we're good. Looking to adopt, then, please, the regular minute, meeting of council, May 11th minutes?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Looking to receive heritage commission minutes of April 8th?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We do have a presentation this evening, from Glennis Verholt of the Solar Colwood Program. It is our final report, folks, after a number of years spent working towards energy opportunities. So, Glennis, do we need lights down, or are you good?
Well, depends on if people can see. Everyone can see the PowerPoint? Okay, great. So, thank you, members of council, staff, and Colwood residents, for being here. As Mayor Hamilton mentioned, my name is Glennis Verholt, and I've had the pleasure of working on the city's Solar Colwood Program, for a number of years now. And, get ready for a whirlwind tour of four years in five minutes. So Solar Colwood was made possible through a grant from the federal government, and through collaboration with numerous partners in the community and farther afield. It began as, in the context of climate action planning, and the findings from the Task Force on Energy and Emissions, that the city, in order to meet climate targets, would have to both build new construction in a very efficient way, and retrofit or improve the energy efficiency of existing buildings. So, Colwood applied for this grant from the federal government, and was successful. The objectives of the project were to reduce Colwood's energy and emissions, to reduce costs for residents, to support local jobs and skill development, to study the impacts of the adoption of this technology, as part of showing that Colwood is a green learning city, and to raise the benefits, awareness about the benefits of energy conservation and renewable energy, to demonstrate that there's a strong business case for renewable energy, to demonstrate financing options, and to improve Colwood's resilience to energy interruptions and demand on the grid. And I'm happy to say, that we met all of these objectives. We did it! Congratulations, everybody! The scope of the program included the municipal showcase, so when you are passing by the fire station, you can see two different types of solar technology up on the roof. Solar thermal, which is called solar hot water, as well, for residents, and energy retrofits, which includes everything under the sun, including free energy and water-saving kits, so a little something for everyone. Energy vehicle charging infrastructure. And these are all pictures of local Colwood folks who have done these upgrades. Research and monitoring, training, and smart home and smart grid technologies, so research and development into new innovative problem-solving approaches. And what the program included was easy processes. So Colwood was innovating with how to do this community-wide energy-saving program. So we had a list of registered installers, and point-of-sale rebates, so that you could get your rebate right away, not having to wait for a check. We had community champions who opened up their homes to show off the technology. We had 80 people come out to one of these Colwood homeowners' places to see the technology there. And a lot of great media, so more than 80 stories over the years, about the Solar Colwood Program. And we provided expert advice and building science support, so that people were making informed decisions about what was available, and what made the most sense for their buildings, and also providing quality assurance and measurement, so that we knew what was going on, and that it was working. And the results? Well, we all did it together! So, if you walk down any block in Colwood, it's likely that at least one person on the street participated in the Solar Colwood Program and is saving energy. So there's a map of all of the people who are doing things. And, in terms of the solar hot water component, Colwood is now a Canadian leader. So if you look at all of the other solar programs in Canada, we're second only to the neighboring Sook First Nation. So, good for us. So here's some photos. And our quality assurance results, we offered site visits to 100% of the homes, and we had great results. Everyone's really happy with their systems. We had a successful ductless heat pump program, so we managed to distribute all of the incentives that were available for these, and they're a great energy-saving upgrade, and they make your home more comfortable, and your bills more affordable. So, there's still grants for them, if you didn't get a chance, from the utility programs. We saw a huge growth in electric vehicle infrastructure through the Solar Colwood Program. So this is the unveiling of the public charging stations at the Wanda Fuga. Here's City Hall's charging stations, which are in use right now, when I pulled in. Royal Roads has some charging stations there. This is the Royal Bay Bakery. This is one of the homeowners who's got an electric car. Lots of the homes are now powered by solar photovoltaics to drive their cars, so if you see an electric car, it might be powered by the sun harvested on people's rooftops. And, this is a before-and-after picture that I just thought was very funny. So you can see the extension cords that had to be poked out the window, for people to charge their electric vehicles at City Hall before. So the after picture is much better. Clean energy jobs and skill development. So, of the survey responses from the installers, they all said that the program was very good at driving demand. And we trained 11 members of the Sook First Nation in solar installation, and provided scholarships for four others through Camosan College, as well. So, we've got clean energy jobs coming along, and as well, support for research and development. So, we have a smart home monitoring system that lets you know how much energy you're using, and lets you reduce it with the same touch on the same screen, and a new solar hot water system that's designed for our climate specifically. Royal Roads University worked with participants who shared their utility bills before and after upgrades, and they found that, on average, there was a 37% energy use reduction. Colwood councilors, you've heard a different number that was preliminary results, they've got more people in the study now, so the newbies didn't have as many energy-saving upgrades, so that's why it's a little bit lower, but it's still quite remarkable, especially the greenhouse gas emission reduction. What we do makes a huge difference for our greenhouse gas emissions. Overall, it's the equivalent of taking 119 cars off the road every year, which is great. And, if you combine up all of the energy bill savings, thanks to Solar Colwood, it's over half a million dollars every year that people are saving, and they can use that money for other things in their community. And you might be wondering, well, people had to pay for those upgrades, so what do those savings really mean? And we've done some calculations about suitable homes, and the return on investment is always good, compared to putting it in a savings account and getting 3% interest. You'll do much better with these energy-saving upgrades. And here's just an example of the business case that we've seen for some of the upgrades for some of the houses. Everything that's over zero is after you've paid off your initial investment, and your positive cash flow from your energy bill savings. So, we've got a good business case. We definitely demonstrated being a learning project and learning community, so Royal Roads was very involved. Two major research projects were undertaken by Royal Roads faculty members, and one of the studies was recently published in a peer-reviewed journal from the UK, and there were many student projects, as well. So lots of community involvement there. And, of course, because we did such good work, Colwood was recognized locally and internationally in very many ways. So when you're heading out the door, you can check out all of the awards for Colwood. We have some really happy homeowners here. This is one of our Colwood Energy Champions, who is happy to be part of the change she wants to see. This couple is really happy to be managing their risk in the future, because they know they have free energy from the sun, for controlling their energy bills in the future. These folks are very happy to do something important, right here, right now, and thanked Colwood Council for them, for giving them the opportunity. In terms of what's next, there are oodles, stacks, of final reports being reviewed by NERCAN right now, so those will become part of the record. And Colwood has ambitious climate action targets, and can use the lessons learned from Solar Colwood to build on this success. So, in conclusion, through Solar Colwood, Colwood became a Canadian leader in solar retrofits, solar home improvements, implemented innovative and replicable approaches to community-wide energy programs, which I know are of interest, and will continue to be of interest, and implemented across Canada. Achieved deeper energy and greenhouse gas savings than previous energy conservation programs in British Columbia, so our approach is working, and delivered economic benefits for residents, both for those who are employed in the clean energy sector, and those who are enjoying lower energy bills. So, that is it. Questions?
Questions? Councilor? No? Anyone? Seeing none, then? Oh, Councilor Day, you got one there?
No questions, just a huge thank you. You've been a very energetic supporter of Solar Colwood for a long time, and I really appreciate all the energy that you brought to a program that was so innovative, and sometimes challenging to figure out new ways to do things, and just always brought a can-do attitude, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Cynthia. I've seen you volunteering a lot at all of the booths, though. And there's huge thanks to a whole bunch of people in this room, who have spent lots of their work and volunteer hours to make this possible. It's definitely a team effort.
And thank you. And I was in the awards and whatever, I just talk about the passing along, I understand Couch and Valley District is trying to undertake Solar City Award Number Six, I think, is what they're looking to go for, so it's catching on. So thank you very much, Glennis, and Judith, and a number of others that were involved with the program. Thank you.
Yeah, Judith's volunteer hours are incredible in the Solar Colwood Program.
Moving on, then, it is correspondence, and what I have before me here is a letter from the District of Machosen. It's in regards to, "The Olympic View Golf Club has applied to liquor licensing and control to extend the hours to serve liquor in Forrester's Bar at the clubhouse, from a 10:00 a.m. Monday to Thursday opening, and 11:00 a.m. on Friday to Sunday openings, to have at 9:00 a.m. seven days a week. There is no proposal to extend the evening service hours. The change will make the opening hours consistent with the clubhouse restaurant, Forrester's Bistro, which is licensed to be open at 9:00 a.m. daily. Seating capacity limited to 72 persons, plus 18 on the patio. In order for the district to consider the impact of the operation of the proposed license on affected residents, you are invited to provide written comments to council by June 1st, 2015." So I need to know from council whether you want me to respond with any concerns, and/or respond that we've received the letter. Councilor Day?
It just seems a little odd to me, I'm not sure who's drinking at 9:00 in the morning, but...
It's just a matter of making things consistent with everything else. It may have something to do with the changes in liquor regulations, to try and align everything, I'm not entirely sure, but I leave it to you guys. Councilor Martin?
Moved to receive.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving on, new business, Planning and Land Use Committee, 7.1.1. It is the rezoning application for RZ 1406, 3320 Machosen Road, and 3319 Painter.
Thank you, your worship. Council will remember that at its April 7th, 2015 meeting, the Planning and Land Use Committee requested that the application be deferred, for additional information before providing a recommendation to council. In order to proceed with the request to rezone the lands from residential R1 and community-institutional P2 zones, to a comprehensive district zone permitting the construction of two-three-story or 18-unit, 36-unit total rental apartment buildings, and nine fee simple small lot, single-family lots. In response to the committee's request for information, the applicants proposed to align the sidewalk to the north side of the driveway access, increase the sidewalk width to 2 meters, complete with a mountable curb, increase the driveway access to 6 meters, to facilitate safe passage of vehicles and non-vehicular modes, increase safety, remove three parking spaces from the northern portion of the parking area for the new sidewalk alignment, and a tot lot play area, agreed to increase the width. They also agreed to increase the width of the multi-use pathway between the apartment complexes to 3 meters wide, to provide for ease of access between pathway users, and increase the safety of users on the property by realigning the infrastructure for vehicular and non-vehicular traffic, and provided conceptual drawings indicating there will be no parking adjacent to the site on Painter Road. The development is adequately serviced by transit, that bicycle parking will be provided according to the land use bylaw, number 151, that according to the Active Transportation Impact Assessment Report prepared by Boulevard Transportation Group, the proposed development will not impact the existing level of service on Painter or Machosen Roads, that the proposed development will be built according to the Built Green Standards, and that the applicants have committed to a one-on-one tree replacement for all trees that cannot be... have committed to a one-on-one tree replacement for all trees that cannot be retained on-site due to condition or the construction activities. They will also contribute $2,500 per unit for every single-family lot, $1,500 per unit for every multifamily lot in excess of two units towards the Community Amenity Fund, and propose to register a covenant ensuring that the status of rental apartment units for a period of 10 years. Bless you. The improvements for flow through, for flow through the site result in the small lots decreasing in width by several inches and a reduction in the overall on-site parking. But it was felt that the 1.5 parking stalls per multifamily unit will be adequate for the development and that they have, staff have no concerns for the lack of parking provided on Painter Road because the small lots exceed the parking standards required and the applicants proposed double-car garages. A restriction on secondary suites and where on-street parking on Painter Road cannot be met in the proposed plan. The boulevards space between driveways on Painter Road may be utilized for landscaping and trees and that the improvements for flow-through and the design of the small lots and driveways would be subject to a form and character development permit application as part of the development approval process. The staff have recommended that the proposed changes be accepted as they improve pedestrian safety and flow through the site and allows for the addition of a play area adjacent to the apartment complex. There is a recommendation before us, and I will so move with just two additions. I'm not going to read out the whole recommendation because it's rather lengthy, but the two additions will be under and in addition to the following. These will be sections E and F. And these were actually sections that the developer has agreed to but did not make it into the original recommendations. The first one would be that as an additional condition of the rezoning amendment, a small playground area be created for the benefit of the residents. And the other addition is that an additional condition of the zoning amendment, a landscaping strip and privacy fence be installed between the parking areas and adjacent residential properties to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning. So with those two additions, your worship, I will move the recommendation.
Second?
Thank you. There were some questions raised during public participation tonight, specifically wanting to know how many dwellings per acre or hectare, whichever, was actually the target and whether or not we were assuming the correct target there. I wonder if planning could answer that?
Certainly, through the chair. The subject property is located in the neighborhood designation with the new fish community plan. And it also falls on Machosen Road, which is considered a general corridor. And the density for lands along general corridors is 58 to 70 dwelling units per hectare. The subject development proposal is just over 54 units per hectare.
Thank you. Yes. And just in regards to the question that was raised on secondary suites and whether or not this would be overturned by Page 115 of the official community plan, we can legitimately require that there be no secondary suites in those small lots?
Through the chair, I do not see any reason why council could make that a requirement of the zoning. Those guidelines in the OCP are meant to guide decisions, not necessarily restrict council's decisions.
Clarification on that specific question? So, sorry, the OCP, basically the OCP is saying that we're encouraging people to have secondary suites. This development is stating that they can't have secondary suites. So are you, the question was, does the OCP override? So if somebody came to the city and said, "We want to have a secondary suite in one of these houses," and look at the OCP Page 115, could they actually, would we be, have to allow them to have a secondary suite?
No.
A follow-up question on that, then, since it's contrary to the OCP, would that not require this to do an OCP amendment for the property?
No, I do not believe the context of that section of the official plan was intended to apply so strictly to each development. The developers' interest in restricting the secondary suites were to meet concerns about parking in the area and concerns about the ability to accommodate parking on the small lots.
A follow-up to quote the OCP, "Secondary suites will be permitted in all parts of the community in single-family and multifamily homes." How is this not an amendment to that if you're not allowing apartments in single-family and multifamily homes?
I would characterize that section of the official plan as general guidance on how to approach secondary suites. Certainly, if council wanted to look at that as strictly applying to all developments that they must have secondary suites, it would be up to council to make a decision based on that. But I would look at that as something that would be generally applied to development applications, and council's free to decide on a case-by-case basis whether suites are a good thing or not.
Thanks, Suri. I'm almost through my list of issues. And of course, now, under 3.2 on the report, referring to the additional information requested by the committee on the flow through the subject site, the applicants are proposing to align the sidewalk to the north side of the driveway access, to increase the sidewalk width to two meters, complete with a mountable curb, and to increase the driveway access to six meters to facilitate safe passage of vehicles and non-vehicular modes. I'm just wondering if this is not contrary to the way that we have been developing our sidewalks, so as to not encourage people to pull up onto the sidewalk to park, et cetera. I thought we were going, our standard was now to have non-mountable curbs to ensure the protection of the pedestrians from the vehicles. So just, I'm not sure whether that's an engineering or a planning question, but...
Our standard is to have non-mountable curbs. If developer wants to put in mountable curbs, there would need to be a development variance.
So then a question to planning, is this assuming a development variance?
This, I believe the references to an on-site sidewalk, which would not be, I could look to the engineer for further comment, but it wouldn't be the standard city sidewalk on road right-of-way. It would be covered by a statutory right-of-way, excuse me, on private property. And it would be up to staff and the developer to agree to a design that likely would happen later in the process at the time of development permit.
Yeah, sorry, on-site, we can't control the curbs on-site.
So I would just offer my comment that I have some concern with the mountable curb. It is easier for young cyclists to not crash when they wobble over, you know, to a sidewalk, but it also doesn't provide safety for pedestrians from the cars. And it might encourage people to use the sidewalk for other things. So I could propose an amendment to a non-mountable curb? Yeah, I'm not sure where that's covered. It's in 3.2 on the report, but I don't know where that would be on the...
For clarification, we're talking about non-mountable curb in the parking lot, right?
It's in the pathway that goes from Painter Road to Machosen Road through the center of the site. That is, there's a sidewalk next to the small lots.
But the curb we're talking about that would be non-mountable would be the curb that's in the parking lot?
It's the side of the sidewalk?
Because at either end of the sidewalk, it would have to be a curb.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so it's only in the parking lot?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, I was looking for the spot where it is, but... Yes.
Your worship, might I suggest that an amendment to the recommendation could be made simply stating that on-site curbs shall be, if council so chooses, shall be a mountable, or excuse me, non-mountable as opposed to mountable in areas where pedestrian safety is of a concern?
For sure. And I mean, that's not precluding curb cuts for access points or anything, just that the main part of the sidewalk would not be easily driven up over. And I would so move.
Second?
Thank you. And I just had one more question, which was in regards to the parking, the parking on the roadway seems to be, it's talking about parking on Painter Road, and there was also a drawing at the Planning and Land Use Committee that showed parking on Machosen Road with which we had some concerns about the proximity to the crosswalk. And I'm just wondering if we have a clearer understanding at this point in time about on-street parking in the vicinity of the development?
They have amended the plan to show the parking stopping at some distance from the crosswalk. And of course, we would be able to move it further back later on if we felt that in operation it was in fact a problem.
Yes, I have some serious concerns about this development. I believe it has been inappropriately classified as neighborhood corridor. I would question where this corridor is to. It should be between two centers. There is no center that this corridor is serving in the gravel pit at this point, and there probably won't be for another 20 years. I have a hard time calling it a corridor when there are no sidewalks of any reasonable description and there are no bike lanes. There is no traffic calming. My feeling is that the site should be referred back to committee under the proposal, under the proviso of the neighborhood area of the official community plan, which would still allow my estimate between 16 and 24 units. This would answer the neighbors' numerous complaints about this being too dense. Over 200 people signed a petition. I reviewed the original map from February 17 presented to Callwood, the original recommendation given to Planning and Land Use in April, the map presented to Callwood now, and the recommendation we're looking at tonight. There have been absolutely no substantive changes in either the map of the development or the recommendation to staff. I think 223 people in a neighborhood opposing something is a darn good reason to go back and talk to the neighborhood and get their buy-in. So I will be moving that this be referred back to committee and that committee reconsider this under the neighborhood designation in the OCP and all of its requirements. And I would so move.
I'm struggling with that one because one of the suggestions has been that the city looks at purchasing this property. The city purchases this property, the entire city would see a tax increase of 12% to 14% because $120,000 of the 1% tax lift. If we're going to be proposing anything along those lines, those things should go to a public hearing so the public has an opportunity to actually discuss it. So if you're saying you want to refer it back to committee, the committee won't get public input. Where you'll get public input is when you have a public hearing. So that's where I'm struggling with this.
If I may, I'm making no suggestion at all that the city purchase that piece of property. And again, I don't really see a reason to go to public hearing with a proposal we already know the entire neighborhood is against. We will hear exactly the same comments then as we do now. And, you know, if the committee didn't listen last time, maybe they will with council advice that this is not suitable for neighborhood corridor until we have a corridor or someplace to connect this neighborhood to.
Madam Mayor, point of order, just that on a motion to refer, our discussion is supposed to be about the appropriateness of the motion to refer it. And then we need to decide if that's the right thing to do.
That was completely inappropriate.
Thank you, worship. I do take some umbrage in the fact that the committee didn't give the concerns of local residents some due. That is not the case. While the decision perhaps was contrary to the wishes, sometimes, you know, the most difficult decisions are not the ones that are the most popular decisions. And the committee did give the consideration, some, a lot of discussion, talked about other kinds of developments on that property. And as a result, there were some changes. And I understand there's going to be some further changes to the development as a result of the input that the residents provided. I understand, from the committee's perspective, after a thorough debate and consideration... I understand, from the committee's perspective, after a thorough debate and consideration of the official community plan, it felt that this development met the spirit of the official community plan. It's near transit, it's near schools, it's near parks. It met the criteria. Now, notwithstanding, it's a change to the neighborhood, and I sympathize with that. And, but this development will not have the impact on the Painter-Machosen intersection that's being portrayed. The real impact will be when Royal Bay develops. So, you know, and I also appreciate that perhaps this piece of property was used as a drop-off, but it shouldn't be taken for granted that it will continue to be available for use as a drop-off, even if there was some other development that was built. And I liken this to when the Veterans Memorial Parkway was constructed. You know, that right-of-way was there for years, and it was always envisioned that it would be built. But people got used to it as a park. And now every single one of us in this room uses the Veterans Memorial Parkway every day. This is, the public and the neighborhood has gotten used to this piece of property as a flow-through, as an area where they could park. And I appreciate that that's going to change, no matter what kind of development is built. That is going to change. I think with the improvements that are envisioned here, coupled with some of the improvements that Dunsmere is looking at through their seismic upgrading program, will benefit and provide some level of safety for people walking. Right now, there's no sidewalks. There will be sidewalks. And there will be a nice guaranteed flow-through connection from one neighborhood to the next, which again is envisioned by the official community plan. So, you know, I think if it meets the spirit, notwithstanding some objection, I believe that it's the right decision. Maybe not the most popular, but I'm not here to make the most popular decision. I'm here to make the right decision when we're looking at the whole community, not just, not just the neighbors. I'm thinking about the whole city. So that's why I am ready to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? A question to staff. Has there been any conversation with the school district at all in regards to, you know, sort of the former uses of that piece of property and how it's perceived that it affects the community? Because it is their schools. We don't control the schools. We don't control their parking. We don't, you know, they tell us very politely to stay away from their business. And I'm just wondering if we've had the opportunity to take those concerns that have been expressed and bring them forward to the school district?
Your worship, the school district was approached formally for a referral response to the application. I believe it was outlined in the original staff report that went to the Planning and Land Use Committee on April 7th. It was, I'm paraphrasing, but along lines that there was no objections to the application as proposed. More robust conversations flowing from the neighborhood concerns has not been taking place with the school district. But, you know, the initial referral was no objection.
Because I mean, I think they have a real opportunity to address some of that through their upgrade that's going on there that might alleviate some of the issue. And so it would be a point to reemphasize perhaps.
Other thing that I have on here is, I just feel that the tree replacement ratio, just one-to-one, is a little bit on the low side or kind of standard. And, you know, in that it is going to make a significant change in the area if this project should go through. Is there any way that we can enhance that in some way, even if it's not necessarily onsite to the development, but an opportunity to contribute in another more meaningful way in, with tree replacements in areas that may be a little bit lacking?
I suppose it might be difficult, given the restrictions onsite, to go beyond a one-to-one tree replacement. If you're considering a one-to-one replacement for similar-sized trees, then as to what's theirs now, it's pretty obvious that it'd be difficult to achieve that. If council wanted to make a condition of the zoning that the developer contribute to a off-site reserve, we do have a beautification reserve fund that's set up that can be used for planting of trees. Council could go there. Might I suggest that if that's something that council wants to explore, they direct staff to have that conversation with the developer and report back prior to public hearing?
Do we need that in form of motion, or will take direction on an amendment in there or not?
A couple ways to approach that. I mean, you could formally make that a direction as part of this resolution, or we could take it as direction. But you would have to call upon us if it isn't forthcoming prior to public hearing. I certainly will make note of it and make sure it happens. But the formal step to make sure that it's attached to this zoning would have to happen later.
So I need, if council so wishes, to consider that?
Madam Mayor, I would move that contribution to the...
Offsite?
Offsite, sorry, what was it? Beautification fund be considered with a report back to council prior to public hearing?
Second.
Discussion, conversation? Call the question on that amendment to the overall. All those in favor?
Opposed. Motion carried. Counselor Day?
Thank you. I guess this'll be my final comment on this application. One of the speakers tonight talked about our vision on our webpage, which is easy to say and hard to do. But to try to blend and balance council's vision for what Callwood should be, the public interest, and the desires of developers. And that's, you know, it's a very difficult balancing act. And I do not doubt one bit that every member of council at the table takes it quite seriously when people make comments, whether it's through coming to public participation or through a petition. And we all struggle to manage that balance in the best possible way so that taxes aren't crazy and our streets are reasonable and our community is still desirable to live in. That said, I firmly believe that with 220-odd signatures on a petition in a fairly small neighborhood in a very well-established part of Callwood, the neighborhood is not seeing the benefit from this development. And, you know, there is a good argument for whether it should be considered a corridor or whether it should be considered a neighborhood. And if it were considered a neighborhood, the numbers would be lower. And maybe that would be more beneficial from the neighborhood's point of view, from the people who live next door's point of view. I think that the people who need to be the most happy with the development is the people who have to live with it for years to come. And so, you know, while I recognize that, you know, I'm here to make a decision for the benefit of all of Callwood, I do see that the neighborhood is not seeing the benefit. And so I won't be supporting the application as much as I think they're good developers and they're trying to do a good job working within the constraints of the site and what they have to do to make a profit. And their interests are important to us as well, and important to me. But in this case, I think it's very clear, when there's more than 200 signatures on a petition, that they haven't won the heart to the community.
Any further comments? Seeing, yep, go ahead.
So, we had a strategic planning meeting last week where this council identified one of our strategic visions as being affordable housing and attracting affordable housing in our community. And I struggle now with the fact that if that is one of this, how do we ever accomplish it within the neighborhood if we can't somehow move forward? I understand about development. I get it. I lived down on, by the lagoon, and we had 700 units move into us where there was 50, 75 homes before. So I understand the stresses when you start seeing more coming in. But I think this is something that's an important part of our community and deserves to go to public hearing. And the entire public of the city of Callwood has an opportunity to comment on it. And I struggle with the fact that we want to deny that ability for our community to actually share with us their thoughts. So to vote against a development and deny them that opportunity, I think is disappointing. So I will definitely be in favor of this.
Anyone else? Seeing none, call the question on the amended motion that we've had before. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry?
Thank you, worship. In response to some concerns that the neighborhoods, neighborhood had, as well as what committee and council had in terms of driveway access onto Painter Road, I understand that the developer has redone some drawings and has passed some drawings out to the public, and the city has just received the copies. So perhaps through you, Madam Mayor, to the director of planning, do you require a motion to review those or just that we're going to receive them for information at the moment and you're going to be bringing forward some further information?
No action is required at this time on behalf of council. Staff would take those resubmissions from the applicant and provide them to council prior to the public hearing with an accompanying staff report as a matter of course.
All right. Moving on then, please, to 7.2, Parks and Rec. 7.2.1, a report on Meadow Park, Royal Bay. And for those of you who got, as I did initially, it was like printed page and skip a page, that was rectified and updated in our electronic agendas, if you opened up the other newest report.
Parks, the creation of parks has not previously been brought in front of committee or council. And we're still working out the kinks in this process.
Is your, yeah, is it on?
Get it a bit closer. How's that? Is that better? Okay. Yeah, we haven't previously brought proposed parks in front of committee or council for approval. And we're still working on that process. But it, the importance of it is that new parks incur a cost to maintain. And council needs to have the ability to decide whether the park in question is worth the maintenance in question. This one particularly stood out because it is large and unusually, shall we say, ornate. It was first considered at Parks January the 19th and February the 24th, and then it went to council on March 9th, 23rd, and April 13th. And this was to draw out more information for council requesting information on costs and information in the form of drawings. And there was a presentation by the developer on the 13th, which is attached. And I hope that council has all the information they need now. The main feature of this park is the fact that it's part of a stormwater channel. So it's part of a chain of parks, which will be eventually all the way along the stormwater channel from somewhere in the vicinity of Murray's Pond to the water's edge on the coast. Now, this could have all been done in a pipe. Maybe decades ago it would have been. But the developer decided to make it into a interesting as well as useful feature instead. The runoff that goes down here will, in fact, come from surrounding areas beyond the development as well as the development itself. However, it will still be dry for much of the year. So we have to think about that channel as being a dry rocky bed for a good portion of the year. And depending on how water flows are channeled in the future, it may become wetter. Some changes that we've identified for safety reasons or aesthetic reasons are identified in the report. So there's a need for a four-foot unclimbable barrier where slopes are steep. Attachment 1 and 2 show you that situation. Attachment 1 is the typical cross-section of the channel, very gentle slopes, enables dogs and children to get down to the water's edge. But as I've said in the report, whereas in Callwood Creek, that's considered a detriment to the creek, in this case, we're talking about an entirely man-made channel. And it's not intended that it be like a natural channel. Therefore, dogs and children could enjoy it. However, when you look at attachment 2, you can see that there are spots near the road where the drainage channel goes under the road that of necessity there are very steep sides. And that is where we would suggest the barriers are needed. There's no obvious barrier in the plans that we have. Gabions are a feature of the plans. That's wire cages full of rock. And I know that there are those on council that have some concerns about them, and staff have some concerns about the gabions in that the, even the best of wire will at times be broken and possibly pose a minor safety hazard. And also that the gabions may grow weeds. The cedar piling check dams in the channel, we've suggested that the tops of those should be slanted so they don't get used as precarious crossings. There are three bridges provided to cross the channel in one section of park under consideration. And we've suggested lighting on the bridges at handrail level. So the developer is proposing this high standard of park because he feels it will bring him an economic development in terms of a higher-priced land. That, of course, is some economic benefit to the city, since higher prices means that area would pay higher taxes than other areas. There may be some economic benefit to the city in simply having such a quality thing to attract people to live here and enjoy the location. But those things are very hard to quantify. The cost of the maintenance of the park is a little easier to quantify, but still very approximate, as we have no parallel parks with which you can compare it. Now, there will be no capital cost to the city, but we've estimated possible cost to maintain as high as $54,000 a year. Current total parks budget is 2000, in 2015, is about $512,000. So that would be about a 10.5% increase. So, that would be about a 10.5% increase in the parks budget when this park is finished in 2016 or 2017. Probably a partial increase 2016 and a full increase in 2017, possibly a year later. It would be an approximately 0.5% increase in total municipal expenditures, offset to a small extent by the income from the new housing created. And after completion of all the parks in this area of the development, which could be five years or more, we would estimate it would be about a 1.5% increase. So, the recommendation contained in the report is that council express concern about the annual maintenance cost of this park. And if it is created in accordance with the conceptual design drawings reviewed at the Parks Recreation and Culture Meeting of May 19th and the Council Meeting of May 25th, as well as the future anticipated parks in Royal Bay. And therefore, council direct staff to discuss with the developer moderation to the current concept to reduce the financial impact in terms of ongoing maintenance costs to a level deemed acceptable by council. And staff of course would appreciate some indication of what level you might be targeting. Thank you.
If you go to page 5, under Section 6, the fifth paragraph, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, yeah. Fifth paragraph, I got lost. The parks budget currently represents 4.3 blah, 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 I got all that. Therefore, the 220,000 additional cost of all five parks would somewhat be offset by the 34,700. Where did the other four parks come from? We're like, we haven't presented those yet, have we?
No, but they are, this is a chain of parks eventually. And there are a couple-
So, the maintenance of the entire park is 220,000 or 270,000?
The parks associated with this area of 425 houses, which is about a quarter of the total development.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm going to start again. So, Paragraph 1 says that this park's $54,000 to maintain it. And then the sixth paragraph talks about five parks, which therefore the additional $220,000 additional cost of all five parks. So, we actually think that the five parks are going to cost us 220,000 and just this one section is going to cost us 54? Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's not a simple multiple. I estimated there was about a total of five parks of this magnitude in the total development.
So, really what we're talking about is that they want to do a park that's going to cost us $270,000 a year? When all five are done?
220.
Therefore, the additional $220,000 additional cost-
Oh, no, you're right. Yeah. You're right, 270.
270.
Yes. Your math is better than mine.
Thank you, Worship. Just through you to the Director of Engineering. So, what type of modifications would you see happening in order to drive the price down?
Well, the, I mean, the obvious modification is to make it all grass and mow it. And therefore, we don't have to weed it. And you can mow it with a big machine. This is a fairly complex piece of landscaping that has different ecosystems within it. So, you know, it means the actual mown grass is a complicated shape, which, you know, essentially the park is more or less a rectangle. And if it was all grassed, you would just run your mower up and down and cover ground pretty quickly. But when you've got to mow complicated shapes, costs go up. Then there's part of it that is meant to be a meadow. So, we're going to have to keep down invasives without being able to mow every week because it's supposed to grow wildflowers. So, we would then be into handwork there, although we would get to mow it once the wildflowers had finished. And then for the rest of the year after that. Then there's the planting beds and tree areas which initially would need a fair amount of hand weeding. Although over time, the mature trees would shade out the possibility of any weeds. And then there's the bottom of the channel which we feel is going to be quite a problem for weeds initially. You know, typically broom. But we know there are other more noxious weeds in that area now that the developer is struggling with. And doing a good job by my dad. And so, we would anticipate some difficult weeding down there and amongst the rocks. Although you might leave those to get a bit bigger before you tackle them. But that's not going to be an easy piece of work.
Thank you. I guess my only concern, and my dad shakes his head at my lawn as well because it's not perfectly straight. It's kind of odd and it's difficult to mow. But, you know, that's character. I enjoy it. But anyways, I would just say, I guess, our parks are one of our biggest assets. And quite frankly, I'm not sure that we spend enough on our parks, although half a million dollars seems like a lot. But really, I'm not sure that we spend enough to bring them up to the potential. You know, they should be, you walk into a park, it should make you smile, you know? And it should just be a good place. And I think if, you know, I think probably the costs may be short-term until things kind of mature and weeds don't have the opportunity to sprout, you know, because of the canopy and all that jazz. And I think we should embrace, we should embrace the creativity here and see how it works. Because I, you know, I think we deserve, Colwood deserves that type of quality. And I just don't want to shy away from it just because, you know, I think we can be creative. And the Parks guys, oh my gosh, have they been, have they done a hell of a job with the limited budget that we provide them? But I think if we encourage them more and provide them some more opportunities than such as something like this, then they will only blossom. And I think if you went back to them, they could probably say, I've got a few ideas and, you know, to reduce the amount based on the concept. And I guess my other, so I'm not as concerned, I guess is what I'm saying. The other thing I like is, and it's always been a belief of mine anyways, that new tax revenue that's generated in a specific neighborhood should, a portion should stay in that neighborhood. You know, as a benefit and for putting up with some of that growth. So, you know, I think if that new tax revenue stays in there and services that park, I think that's only a good thing for that neighborhood and for the city in general. So, yeah, I'm not as concerned about it on first blush anyways that this is going to create a massive burden. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Nothing like a good debate over parks for me. So, it's been my first love in Colwood, the parks. And I think I absolutely support the recommendation here in looking at ways that we can build a park that's beautiful, innovative, and still manageable. Because I definitely have seen, and I completely passionately believe in the value of those parks, that they're worth the money. And if this turns out to be as good as they're hoping it will be, I know that it will increase the value of the homes that are near it. We've seen that happen at Dockside Green where they were dealing with contaminated soil and sewer effluent. And they've turned it into a real benefit for the community. But that was very carefully managed with a very specific plan. So, I have some concerns in terms of saying, you know, great idea, let's have a meadow. But the wildflowers, we need to know exactly what wildflowers we're going to plant because many of the problematic weeds that were noxious weeds that we're dealing with most likely came in the mix with an original wildflower planting area as well. So, I think we have to be very careful about how we do it so that it is, it doesn't become, you know, that monkey on our back of trying to deal with, you know, another problem area. So, you know, I think that our Parks guys would be a very good resource in terms of giving some feedback on what works. I don't think everything has to be square manicured lawns. They're pretty used to working around a heck of a lot of trees that they probably know very darned well. I'd get quite upset if one of them went missing. So, and they've done a good job with a fairly small budget to work with. So, I do think that there's maybe some real opportunities in working with stones since you're looking at a dry bed for a lot of the year. Maybe that stone rather than the gabions that might have the issue with invasives getting in there and being hard to treat, maybe just large slabs of rock would work. You know, there's probably a lot of options that could be worked into the plan to make it more manageable. Certainly, from my past experience of working with parks, the number one mantra that became very, very clear in parks for me is manage liability. And I see that the engineer has noted a few ways to address that for sure. Don't create any big drops. Don't create anything people can climb out on. You know, pretty boring stuff in some ways, but really, really important because we need the lighting to be sure that people aren't going to sue us for tripping over something. We need to have proper barriers. And if we do have to have a sheer drop, then we have to be sure that we mitigate that. And one of the biggest probably issues, and I'm sure the developer knows this, is managing those invasive species of which there are many. And they're not going to magically disappear because we put something else there. I thought that 30 years ago and I'm still working on my yard. So, and maybe I just didn't get it right, but I'm trying to improve. So, I do support the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, I do support this park. I think it'll be a fantastic asset for all of Colwood when it's finished. So, the maintenance costs don't scare me too much. Also, for the record, broom wasn't an accident. It was imported here on purpose by some insane gardener who thought it would look good. As far as broom and invasive removal goes, we've had some very good luck working with Havenwood Park Trails, the lagoon, pulling out the invasives by volunteers. We've had no shortage of volunteers and moved truckloads and truckloads of invasives out at very low cost to the city. The city basically picks up the debris and hauls it away. So, I would support this wholeheartedly. I just have one question to direct to planning. The report mentions 425 houses and five parks. Is this zoning all in place at this point?
Zoning currently in the Royal Bay neighborhood is still in the state it was when it was originally adopted over 10 years ago. It provides for densities that are identical to what the 2014 Official Replant Amendment calls for. It's just that the details and layout of the neighborhood differ between the zoning and the OCP area.
I'm just trying to get a timeline on these 425 houses. The mayor or the, sorry, engineer estimates the five parks may be completed in as little as five years. I don't think we've seen that level of development at Royal Bay in 15 years. Just curious, I'm warning council that the tax revenue projected from the new houses might be a little bit longer in coming than five years. I'm hoping the parks will be phased accordingly.
Any other comments from council? I just, I think that, you know, I've long been critical of our rocky, rocky outcrops and steep slopes that we often end up with in our developments. And although they may not have the same kind of maintenance requirements, you know, in there, they're also not very usable or very creative for most of the community. So, you know, an opportunity like this doesn't come very often. And I think maybe the whole idea of parks and what residents are willing to contribute is something that should be addressed. I know the CRD commands about $25 out of each homeowner for park acquisition, of which we've seen nothing contributed in the city of Colwood. And so, you know, I support staff going there and looking to see what change, you know, what changes they can make with the developer to mitigate some of the concerns. But I welcome the idea that we have a park at the end of the day that we'll allow for people to walk through and enjoy and be part of, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just also want to say I'm very supportive of the park. I'm excited to see it go underway. And again, I also had some concerns and it's a shame that it didn't get to reach committee. But again, with the gabion walls, they're also not the cheapest. So, small things like that, I know staff could do recommendations and propose cheaper ways that look perhaps better aesthetically. And so, I'm prepared to move the recommendation, if that's okay, that council indicate that is concerned with the potential maintenance cost implications of the Meadow Park if created in accordance with the conceptual design drawings, as well as the future anticipated parks in Royal Bay. And therefore, council direct staff to discuss with the developer moderation to the current concept to reduce the financial impact in terms of ongoing maintenance costs to a level deemed acceptable by council.
Any further conversation, staff?
Clarification, the wording of the recommendation, I think assumes, I think it was meant to assume, and I hope it's actually worded that way, that this would be coming back to council for approval with a revised plan. Is that what council wants? Was the intent that the staff go off and negotiate the changes they can, but the park proceed?
I think it's imperative here what the changes might be and what was able to be, you know, achieved in there. Yep. Anybody else? Call the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Next item, Economic Development Innovation Committee Memorandum in Regards to West Shore Chamber. And my apologies, Doug and Julie, because I should have maybe looked to moving you guys up. But gee, without you, I might not have had an audience. So, thanks for sticking around. How will that be you, Counsel Martin?
Sure. At the April 13th meeting, the council moved the following resolution that basically we approved $19,000 in the budget for West Shore Chamber of Commerce. But that the funds should not be granted until the West Shore Chamber of Commerce provides their 2014 financial statements and 2015 statements. Attached are those statements. And we have the President of West Shore Chamber of Commerce, and I'm sorry, the person-
CEO.
And the CEO, Executive Director, or the Executive Director of West Shore are here to answer council's questions. And would you guys like to do, if, may I just invite them and give a 30-second pitch to us?
Yeah, is there highlights on there, Julie, that you might want to bring to council's attention or?
It's on, okay. I think, just thank you very much, Mayor Hamilton and counselors and staff for an opportunity to come back to you. What I did with this, coming so new as I am, is to break it down into pieces, look at what I thought each aspect would cost. cost, and build it back up again. So if you have any particular questions about why I'm suggesting what I am and what, you know, the amounts are, are, you know, how I can justify that, I'm happy to, to go through that. Um, but my assessment, having looked at it, was that actually for the core work that the chamber carries out, which is of benefit to Colwood, is my conservative estimate is that that's actually worth about fifteen thousand dollars. Um, but given that I'm new at this and, uh, we need to have a chat and look at the metrics, make sure that we're all happy with that, um, my proposal for core funding is actually ten thousand. Uh, and then project work, um, going at the, uh, the, the aspects that Colwood, um, has put forward and that I've discussed with Sandra and Ian so far, that that would therefore be up to nine thousand, but that is obviously based on what, uh, projects go ahead that we can assist Colwood with.
Members of council? Councilor Dave, lead off?
Thank you. I just have a question about the community profile and business investment profile. I'm just wondering, um, I'm looking to make sure we're not duplicating work that's already being done. And at the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society, we had the benefit of a student for, uh, quite a while last year, uh, finishing a master's, and she created community profiles for each of the Western communities, and I'm wondering, is what you're doing, um, different than that?
Are you speaking specifically to the project aspects?
Uh, to what a community profile and business investment profile would, would be. Would it be different than, uh, population metrics, you know, transit information? Is it different than that?
Well, I mean, to be honest, this is part of the to-be-confirmed discussion with the city. So the project-based work, we identified within that opportunities, uh, where we felt that we could contribute, but-
Okay.
That's, you know, on the basis of a conversation to be had with cities, so that we don't duplicate.
Okay, so these are options. These are not things that are-
That's right. All, all the project funding, we identified opportunities where we could work with the city, but none of them are, are agreed. They're just opportunities that we could, uh, assist.
Okay, uh, but the funding is limited, um, that we have, uh, allotted, uh, to work with the chamber with. So how would you prioritize those things?
Well, a- a- as I'd, I'd said, there's, there's two aspects. There's what I would describe as core funding. That's the stuff we do every day, you know, so that, that is one pot of money. Uh, what we would do is look at where we're going with the chamber and speak with councillors and staff about priorities to get through this year and looking into next year, to determine where the best fit is. Um, I mean, my initial assessment, looking at it, you know, given that we've still got some further conversations to have, you've got a new economic development officer coming in, is that project work could be, uh, potentially in the realm of around, you know, six to seven thousand, but it could be three thousand, you know, or it could be more than that, uh, but obviously there's a, there's a finite amount. So that's the conversation that we have to, to have. Yeah, or it could be zero.
Yeah, so I, I, I guess I'm just looking to, to have some accountability from, from our side of the table in terms of not expecting more from you than, than what we have provided, and ensuring that what we have provided, we're getting full benefit for.
Yeah, I mean, my, my sense in terms of working with the staff thus far is that I'm able to demonstrate what we're doing that, that justifies core funding. So what I would be looking to do, um, with the acceptance of council and staff is to, uh, submit, say, quarterly invoices on that basis. The project work, we would have to work up, you know, on bit by bit, so that we would have to say, this is what we're going to do, this is how much it's worth, did it get done? Yes, or no, you know, it, but, but that's how we would look at it on a, on a case-by-case basis, so that actually there is value, uh, and acknowledgement on both sides, because that is what has been not always, you know, on the path over the last few years.
Okay, great, thank you. Staff?
Uh, Your Worship, I just wanted to suggest something, and, um, this is something the Director of Finance actually brought up with me last week. Um, it, it might be helpful if council gave us, gave Colwood staff some direction in terms of sign-off for invoicing. Um, if council is, is comfortable with staff, um, signing off on the invoices as they come in from the chamber, that would be good direction to get at this stage.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Just to ask, in terms of, um, I, I guess, so far, we're, we're, we're standing beside the loop. We're not in the loop. And, um, you know, I think we need to be, you know, in order to provide sign-off, we have to have some idea of what the goals are and, and what the plan is. Um, and at least from my perspective, I don't know those yet, and so I'd like to know a, when, when I would, when that would be reasonably available. And I'd like to see that, that part at least, come back to council where, where council knows, um, what staff's recommendation is and, and what, what the sign-offs are going to be, and then, then I'd be more than comfortable to suggest that staff, uh, could sign off on things when we, but right now I feel like I'm, I'd be saying, yes, you can sign off on a bowl of Jell-O, because I don't know what it is.
Yes, yeah, by all means, Doug, come-
Oh, Doug, we need you at the mic just for the camera.
Just for benefit of the, um, recording folks.
The, uh, the project work that, that, that's entailed in the, in the initiatives are in fact from the economic development plan. Okay, so, and right now, at this point in time, there's not a lot of detail behind it. We don't have an EDO yet, so the reasonable approach is, were mentioned in that. They're saying, we, the Chamber of Commerce is going to do this, 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 and this. We're going, okay, so we got to be paid to do this, but what does that entail right now at this point in time? You know, TBD. So, we took a guess, and, you know, it's our best estimate at this point in time of what that is. So just to clarify, it's not something that we just came up out of a wish list and sort of said, this is what we're going to magically do. You know, we did go to the economic development plan and, and developed it from that. I just wanted to clarify that with you.
And, and to go back to Ian, your comment, I think what you were relating to is the ten thousand dollar, um, identified core funding information that's in here, sort of to put, or, or consider putting out there that, you know, we, we have an amount of money that staff will keep track of and make sure that, you know, we're getting our needs met in those areas. And then as projects come forward in the other section, um, Doug, what you're speaking with, that are more directly tied to the economic development plan that we have in process, we can approve those ones as they come? Is that what I'm hearing between the conversations?
Okay, so I'm not sure if that helps council thoughts on that. Any other comments? Councilor Knoll?
Yes, thank you. I'm happy with the documentation provided. Uh, I wish we had had that at budget time rather than four months after the fact. Uh, what I would like to see at the end of this fiscal year is a report of what our nineteen thousand dollars was spent on. Uh, right now, your statement of revenue and expenses, just basically break it down to magazines, vacation pay, you know, just the basic accounting things. I'd really like to know how much was spent, for example, on, uh, each core service? Uh, just as responsible accounting. It's not, I know it's not a huge amount of money, but I would like to see, we spent five thousand dollars on your lunch program, whatever, that kind of detail.
Yeah, and, and I, I entirely support that approach. Um, unfortunately, when I first came to council, I wasn't in a position to do that, um, having been recently, you know, arrived at the chamber, uh, without benefit of a hand over due to the, uh, the fact that my predecessor had to go off on, on early maternity leave. So I absolutely support that approach, and that is how I, uh, with my colleagues, put together paperwork that I've sent to you. So, indeed, happy to do that.
So, the recommendation we have before us is simply to receive, we're going to, um, uh, council received the, uh, West Shore Chamber of Commerce twenty fourteen income statement and proposed twenty fee fifteen, fee for service work plan for information w- um, on staff's recommendation of identifying a number. Um, I'm looking to see if there's any opportunity here for us to create that number in part of this before we get into a full-off recommendation. Is that going to be you, Councilor Martin? This is your ballywick. Staff?
Um, Your Worship, if I could just, um, I guess, summarize the thoughts of, um, the chamber representatives and, and what I've heard on council is that, um, the recommendation, recommendation could be on along the lines of, uh, authorizing staff to approve quarterly invoicing for the core services up to ten thousand dollars for the fiscal year of two thousand fifteen, and that project funding be authorized by council on a, uh, project-by-project basis.
And that we receive an accounting and report at the fiscal year end to cover off on Councilor Knoll's request?
Uh, those are supposed to be a requirement of asking for funds. That's why I, I brought up the question in the first place, is to make sure that the necessary requirements were met. And the council motion was to not release any of the money until we receive those reports. We now have those reports. I'm happy to, uh, move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, so we're moving the as-written recommendation, not the staff one. Councilor Day?
Um, I guess the, um, the as-written recommendation is what's on the table?
At this point now?
At this point. So, um, I think that, um, the chamber's working as hard as they can to get their feet under them after, um, quick exodus for, uh, maternity. I know that can be really hard. Um, there's, of course, um, a long history, I'm sure, um, but what I'm hearing is that about of the nineteen thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars is related to the core, core services that the chamber does for the city of Colwood. Um, so, uh, whether you want to add it to this motion or for me to make a second motion, um, I could do that. I would recommend that, that we, um, authorize staff to, to release the, the core funding amount and then to bring back a report to council on, when, when they're ready for, uh, the project work. That way, that gets the money for the core functions, uh, to the chamber, so they can carry on doing their business that they do. And then it leaves the additional funding, uh, with the city of Colwood until we've agreed on, on what those additional projects would be. Is that an amendment?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I don't believe such an amendment is necessary. The original council motion was approving nineteen thousand, the funds not be granted until they provide the financial statement and budget and they are reviewed by council. Uh, we voted to release nineteen thousand to them. How they split it, I think, should be pretty much up to them, as long as they give us an adequate accounting of it in the end.
Okay, maybe I'm confused, Councilor Knoll, because what the recommendation that's in the report before us simply says council received this information for information and stops there. So we, are we then with this reverting to our original one of nineteen?
I, I believe that receiving those meets the-
Meets the criteria from the original-
Re- requirements from the original motion.
So as long as we're on clear understanding of what that means, I'm just trying to cover off on, on everybody's part in peace.
Uh, I'm clear that that re- means releasing nineteen thousand dollars in the budget to the Chamber of Commerce for two thousand fifteen.
Does that make it more clear to you? It does to me now?
Uh, it makes it more clear to me, but I, uh, preferred Ian's wording to the motion because there's a lot that's hanging in the balance still that is not decided.
Uh, Your Worship, if I could, um, interject again, and, and if the Director of Finance wants to, uh, correct me on any of the-
The motion-
Yeah. I'd like to, um, there's a balance here in terms of, um, releasing the money for the good work that the chamber does, and then council feeling like they're getting the oversight, um, that they need. Uh, the nine thousand dollars in the grand scheme of things is not a lot, given all the overhead and whatnot that could be created through, um, staff creating reports and whatnot. So I think, um, there, the approach where the ten thousand is released and then staff, uh, are directed to provide a report on the project activities, um, in the second quarter of two thousand fifteen or somewhere abouts, uh, would be a good approach as opposed to a, you know, a two thousand, one thousand, three thousand dollar at a time reporting. Um-
Yeah, and I'm not hearing that from the motion that Councilor Knoll's put ahead of us, is it's providing them the full nineteen and you guys can still report to us-
Correct.
-to how it's being spent.
And, and I would be comfortable if, if, if council was, um, comfortable with the idea of releasing up to nineteen thousand dollars and then invoices being approved at the staff level as they come in for the project work. That would also be something I'm happy with.
I think that's where we're at, so, um, anybody else input? Councilor Day?
Just, um, on a process level, nothing to do with how I feel about the chamber. Love the chamber. You guys are great. Uh, just, I, I'm not comfortable with, um, uh, kind of, um, the, you know, paying invoices as they come in. I, you know, let's approve things, pay for them, and get it out the doors, how I feel about it. But I don't like sending money out without a plan for how it's supposed to be spent. So that's why I'm happier with the, giving the ten thousand for the core service. I have no problem with that. Um, and then make a plan, tell me what it is, and I'll be happy to give you the rest of the money.
I concur with Councilor Day. I know, shocking.
Is that a tweak that we want to- Is this a tweak to the motion and understanding of it that we have now, just to add the fact that, and, and maybe we can clarify that, you know, we'll release the ten thousand and that, uh, anything beyond that, staff will work with the chamber on those projects and report them back to us, and we'll get to, you know, thumbs up them or whatever? Is that what you're looking for in there? And you need to find a second, or if that's the case, to-
I, yeah, I think it should be an amendment, not, uh, part of the motion.
So I'll, I'll, I'll propose an, an amendment that, uh, ten thousand dollars be released, uh, for core services, uh, and that a plan be brought forward for the project work and, and, um, the, uh, further money's dispersed after that.
Second, or? Discussion, any further on that one? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries on that. So now we're into the full-on, um, motion, which is, um, the one that's before us, but do we need to staff for clarification relate that, that to the earlier motion because of-
We have no idea what's going on. We're going to listen to the state.
All done? Okay, so we're all good. Uh, call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carry. Boy, that was an ordeal, wasn't it? Thank you, folks. Thank you very much. Uh, second item on, under that committee is, uh, seven point three point two, implementation of economic development strategy. Uh, Councilor Martin, I understand that there is a bit of a, um, change in what has been recommended before us here within the report?
Correct, yeah.
Uh, can you lead that one, please?
Certainly. So the, uh, Economic and Innovation Committee was quite, uh, proactive in the attempt to create a new land use application, a business property tax, uh, measurement, and a business license and secondary suite, uh, discussion around costs. Our CAO believes that it is premature since we are bringing on, uh, an economic development officer and also the fact that, uh, we are still waiting on our strategic plan and that, uh, those values that the Economic Development Committee has outlined may not meet the same strategic plans as, uh, council had during our discussion last week. So that the recommendation, recommendation from the Economic Development Committee be received within- So that the recommendation, recommendation from the Economic Development Committee be received with thanks and that the recommendation be duly considered further by council once council receives the report from the CAO on the outcomes and corporate priorities emerging from the recently completed strategic planning and priority setting session. So move it. I'll give it to you.
Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Moving into bylaws, bylaw number one five seven three for final reading, West Shore Parks and Recreational Center fees and charges by law. Yeah, we need to leave. See you later, bye-bye. Ra. Don't go far.
The West Shore Directors.
So duly noted that Councilors Martin and Chong have vacated the chambers in accordance to potential conflict of interest on that court case. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Get them back. Motion to move in camera?
It's a beautiful thing.
Second, or please?
Second.
All those in favor? Bows, motion carried?
Well, yeah, let's, we're going to do seashells.
We're back to in camera, and I think I'm taking, am I taking minutes or what's happening here? We weren't.